...of the United States of America and two Republicans for which we stand, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the name for our invitation. Today is, uh, Mr. North Chapel from North Chapel Community Bible Church, the Director of the Men's Men's.
Pray with me, please. Our Heavenly Father, thank you for the privilege. We enjoy this evening of participating in the democratic and representative process of government which this gathering represents. We ask your blessing on those who speak this evening. May their thoughts be clear, may their words be persuasive, and may the results of their discussions be honoring to you. Heavenly Father, what a privilege we have in our town to have the concerned and dedicated servants who serve on this council to represent us. And so, Father, I pray attentively for our mayor, our vice mayor, and each of our council members, that you place a loving and protective hedge around them and that you give them precise direction in their deliberations. I pray this in the precious name of your Son Jesus. Amen.
So, call this back. Mayor Cavanaugh?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Elke?
Yes.
Councilmember Yates?
President.
Councilmember Dickey?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Leta?
Yes.
Um, our mayor's report tonight, we're gonna go over a few things, but I also would like to, uh, give some congratulations. Uh, the first is to Dr. Will Smith and Paul Applejohn of the New Kiwanis. It was my pleasure to present them with the United Blood Services Hero Award, Platinum Level, which is the highest of all the levels, and this was given to the town. Uh, this is, uh, Alex Keke, and, uh, they did a fantastic job. They do a great job every year with their four drives, but they were recognized at the highest level. So, I did want to recognize them. Also, congratulations to the school and Dr. Paul McGelice and our high school ex-robatic teams that competed against teams from out of state and other cities in Arizona. It was a lot of fun to be a referee for the competition. Dr. Paul did a tremendous job, and you have been very proud of our two Fountain teams. Congratulations also to all the students at the Fountain Hills High School who received awards for their winter sports participation. Uh, it was great to be there to share the evening with student athletes. Uh, I brought my mayor's mobile town hall to the fair for the weekend. I gave out lots of information to visitors and new residents about our wonderful town. It was great talking to everyone and welcoming all the artists to our town. I attended Mayor, Scottsdale Mayor Jim Lane's State of the City address and sat with our council delegation, thanks to our host, Fountain Hills resident and former councilman and consul Enrique Melendez, representing El Salvador. It was a great opportunity to show support for our neighboring towns of the west. Mayor Lane and I have met on several occasions on mutual interest to forge a good partnership beneficial to both our communities. Uh, Fort McDowell Yavapai Nation had a grand opening of their new early childhood school. It was an honor to be invited to sit with their tribal council members and President Dr. Clinton Patia for this outstanding accomplishment. The beautiful state-of-the-art facility will take in children from six weeks to days to kindergarten level. Councilman Cecil Yates and I attended an event sponsored by Republic Services, our trash collector. Uh, it was a great opportunity to meet with their executives and management staff to discuss issues important to our town. Five hundred hikers from all over the valley showed up at McDowell Mountain Park to hike for the homeless. The event is in its 12th year, and I was honored to welcome them to our area, and of course, I put in a plug for Fountain Hills to come back and visit us. Lastly, I attended a very important meeting at the Capitol last Friday, very important to Fountain Hills and to the taxpayers here. The state has proposed some drastic changes to the transaction privilege tax, uh, which if it gets passed in the legislature, could cost Fountain Hills $300,000 a year in revenue and a lot more when the Elman property is developed. They're also trying to make changes to how the auditing system goes, where we would not have any control over the auditing. The meeting was with representatives of the governor's office, legislators, the legal cities, and a group of mayors. In the past few months, I've been working with a large group of mayors to fight this proposal, but thanks to state Representative John Cavanagh, this meeting was arranged to voice our objection as a unified front. I'm optimistic that the state now realizes the drastic consequences for Fountain Hills if this is allowed to pass in its present form. I expect that, uh, on our meeting tomorrow morning at the Capitol, that we will be continuing this discussion. And I also want to take this opportunity to thank Zulee Daddi for all the help she's given me in the last few days, a crash course in financing, auditing, and taxing. I'm sure someday I'll use that. And now I have to read a, uh, a read proclamation. It's the 10th anniversary of the L. Allen Crook Stank River of Time Museum. Town of Fountain Hills proclamation, whereas from a little museum located in half of the Chamber of Commerce office in Fountain Park in 1991 to today's highly acclaimed L. Allen Crook Stank River of Time Museum, has been a journey of many years. And whereas, tonight, we recognize the 10th anniversary of its official opening in 2003. And whereas, in less than a year after opening, the River of Time Museum received certifications from the Arizona Historical Society, a process that normally takes five years. And since that time, the museum's reputation has grown, and it has received accolades from visitors and professionals. And whereas, additions have been made to the original structure, including a new wall built in the lobby of the building, which contains a mural painted above the faux rock surface and a kiosk embedded in the wall providing information about the museum and the members of the Hall of Fame of this region. And whereas, new exhibits have been added, including a wall of pictures on the history of Fountain Hills, more audiovisual equipment to inform visitors about tax, the Roosevelt Dam, and the Amethyst Mine in Four Peaks, a statue of Jack Swilling to complete the water exhibit, and a scale model of Fort McDowell as it looked in the mid-1800s. And whereas, people important to the museum's history have been permanently recognized for their efforts as follows. In 2008, the name of its long-serving president, whose vision and perseverance made the museum a reality, was added, and the museum came know, became known as the L. Allen Crook Stank River of Time Museum. And in 2009, the traveling exhibit room was named the Clinton and Patia Gallery in honor of the Yavapai Tribal Nation's president, who has been a member of the board of directors since its inception, and who has contributed in so many ways to the success of the historical society and the museum. And whereas, as time passes, more changes will be made to keep the museum current and enhance its mission to lead visitors through creative, informative exhibits that accounts the captivating past of the Lower Verde River Valley, to depict the importance of water in Alsonoran Desert, and to illustrate how water determines the course of history. Now, therefore, Ireland and Cavanaugh, mayor of the town, who hereby proclaimed that the L. Allen Crook Stank River of Time Museum, a valuable asset to the Town of Fountain Hills, and congratulate the museum on its 10th anniversary, and honor those all involved in making the museum great. And now we will, we have scheduled appearances, and I will go to ten on that.
Mayor Cavanaugh, we're with the council. Again, you have, um, with our fee-for-service, um, providers for, um, a number of activities that we have in the community. We'd ask that they give somewhat of a mid-year report on, on the, uh, um, activities and what they're providing. So, I'd like to maybe ask that the, uh, Chamber of Commerce Tourism Bureau come up and give a, a report to the council, answer any questions that you might have.
Mayor and council members, thank you for, um, having us here today. I look forward to the opportunity to report to you. Mark McDermott, um, unfortunately couldn't be here to give this report, uh, he sent his regrets. So, let me get this started. Oh, yep, wrong one. Here we go. There we go. So, this is our mid-year report for, uh, the 2012-2013 year. Um, as you know, the mission of, of the bureau, the Tourism Bureau, is to stimulate business vitality and, and enhance the quality of life. Our goal is to really bring in overnight high-value visitors and day-trip visitors in order to enhance the, the local economy. And we do this through a number of, a number of, uh, opportunities we have, in particular events. Uh, let's see. So, in the interest of time, because I know I have about five minutes, let me just kind of try to roll this pretty quickly. Um, we attract visitors to our key destinations with events, our arts, our public art collection is one of the finest in the valley, entertainment, um, we promote various things. We have our outdoor desert experience, hiking and biking. We just produced a video related to hiking. Uh, golf certainly is one of our assets and a premier asset, and we do have the Sonoran Golf, uh, Golf Trail, which we've kind of consolidated all of our golf courses to create a website around that. Uh, we work with the Fort McDowell Yavapai on the Southwest Native American culture. We promote some of their events, particularly at Fort McDowell Adventures. And we see weddings as being a niche market for our community because of the, the fountain, and many, many brides like to get married, um, at the fountain and then the community center. But as a tourism bureau, doing that also enhances many of the other businesses that are located here, for dining, for accommodations, for other reception venues that we have, such as the Holiday Inn, Copper Wind, and we, there's a lot, quite a bit of enhancement there. So, now just to kind of move forward with some of the ways that we do, um, promote the area as a, as a tourist destination. First of all, um, our website, we've, we have once again revamped it, and our web developer is Five Hints or Maffet, which is a Jump Start Biz, uh, client. And they've helped us to actually put this, this website into a very user-friendly platform, uh, for somebody like me unless I update it, which is a, um, a WordPress, uh, platform. Some of the key elements, and I, if we had time, I could click through to these things and, and show you more of the website, but some of the key elements of this website is that it has a comprehensive business directory, and all the Fountain Hills businesses get a free listing, and they can upgrade that for an annual fee, so that they could, you know, if they want to put a video on it, have more, um, their social media buttons and things, they can do that. But they do have a free listing. And it is, um, the, there is a cost for upgrading that, and that's a shared revenue opportunity partnership with Maffet and the Visitors Bureau. Um, another thing is there's an events calendar on here that'll be very comprehensive and will, um, people, it's actually user-driven, so people can add their own event. We, there is a fee to add an event of $2. The reason we do this is as a tracking mechanism, so somebody just can't put an event that's not really an event and send people to somebody's house for a party, when there is none. And so, that, that's one of the reasons for that. Um, it also has deals. People, all, anyone who wants to can list a deal or a special opportunity. Businesses can do this as a way of promoting specials they have on an ongoing basis. Um, all of our guides are on there, our dining guide, our visitors' guide, um, the bridal guide, then they're all accessible, um, right on the website, and they're page, many of them are page-turning, uh, brochures, and can be downloaded. It also has a blog component that we're developing, um, and will continue to develop. And one of the reasons the blog is really important now is because, um, content is king according to Google, which is our, um, the big deal, because it's, and it has to be fresh content. So, the more we can write, uh, even like 200-word articles and put it on there, the more our rankings will go up. Uh, the next steps for us are to engage the businesses in getting their free listings, signing up for their listing, or getting enhanced listings. We want to drive traffic to our site, and we'll do that through a number of ways. In our first month up, we had about 2,500 visitors, which was pretty good for, um, a new site, because it took a long time to push yourself up there. But we're using our relationships with our advertising partners to help us enhance our rankings. We also use our promotional materials, which I'll show you. We have print ads. We also have created some window clean details for businesses to put on their, uh, store windows or doors, or, and we're adding to our codes to many of our materials, so that, that should help us to make us more contemporary. We also promote a lot through our social media platforms. Um, I wanted to point out, uh, highlight, uh, one of our big print advertising buys was the Phoenix Magazine in their November section, Best Places in the Valley. It was all, it was in your packet in the mid-year report that we submitted a few weeks ago, but we had about an eight-page section in this, in the Phoenix Magazine that you probably all, uh, remember. Uh, and that was the section, and it starts like this, and it just talks about the area and has a calendar of events. We also, this is a, a pretty good publication for us. It has a lot of valley credibility. It has 74,000 paid subscriptions, and pass along is like, winds up to be about 85,000, 185,000 readers. And other, um, I'll move on to our other, some of our other print advertising. One I, I wanted to kind of say here in terms of how we choose what kind of advertising placements we choose, is we, we really look for things that focus on our target audiences, which would be visitors, people planning vacations here, as well as people, uh, in the valley looking for events and things to do. Also, we, we choose things that support our local businesses, and, and by that I mean that sometimes if we will take a position in a, in a publication, it actually lowers the cost for their placement. So, um, in the Valley Guide and in the Arizona Collector's Guide, these things will reduce their, their cost of placement, and it gives us more of a, of a presence. The other thing is that they have, we're now looking at more of the online value that, that these print publications add, and sometimes even if they aren't a, a print publication. Uh, this Arizona Key Magazine is, um, a pretty strong partner with us because they, they're an excellent publication. They have a good network with the concierge in the valley, so they get to, um, the concierge use them as a, a referral vehicle, and they also, um, will, uh, promote our area. The, uh, some of the other things that they do is they have a quite, um, their website, arizonakey.com, is a very, very good website for trip planning. And because they have a pretty good SEO strategy, meaning that they, they really work at heart, generally when they're looking for people at planning vacations, they can generally come up on page one in Google. And since we are on their site, in a, in a fairly predominant way, we have, um, a two-minute video, we have a page about Fountain Hills, and a slideshow, they have a very good mobile app. It helps us to improve our visibility. It would be very hard for our site to just get a number, you know, on the first page of Google, if somebody's saying, "Looking for an Arizona vacation." It's, it's just not gonna happen, and paper click would be extremely expensive. They also do a lot of social media. They are very big in Facebook and Twitter, and they, they do post a lot about our, our area. The advertising we have in there, it has on, um, it'll say 10 things to do in Fountain Hills, and they'll talk about our various assets, the fountain, hiking, golf, things like that, and it's the facing pages are ads. Um, I know some of the local businesses really do like that publication. Um, on occasion, Sammy Fine Jewelry has said that people will bring that one into her store. So, she really feels that that's an excellent buy for us. And that's, and that's one of the reasons we do it, plus their, their online capability is really, really outstanding. Um, there's other print advertising we do. Valley Guide I mentioned, three times, we're in there three times per year. It's, it's a quarterly. We don't, we're not in the summer issue. 70,000, um, are, are produced each, uh, with each issue, but it's about 210,000 pass along. We take a quarter-page position, and then we really wind up with a two-page spread with our other, with other advertisers, like the Fountain Hills Artist Gallery, Ronnie's, and, um, I think, uh, Suburban Soul takes a position in there. This actually lowers their cost per placement, because we have that position. Um, we, we're in there, the other, some of the other publications are for, um, accepting visitors, like the Arizona Official Visitors Guide. We have a listing in there, and the Phoenix Guide. We don't take, uh, ad space in there because it's extremely expensive for the area, it's like three or $4,000. We do have a position in the, uh, Phoenix Reed Location Guide, and we get a lot of leads from that. Oops, I'm done. Sorry. Okay, can I, okay, what can I, how fast can I go? Do I have one minute or two minutes? All right, okay. Some online marketing. We have a Facebook page. We now have 400-plus fans. We have Twitter followers. We, our visitors' guide, I'm just gonna run through this. We have, uh, is, we have TripAdvisor. We take a sponsored page here. This gives us control of some of that page, meaning we can put our events on there. We can put, uh, we have banner ads that clicks into our website. Our guides are on there. We can have specials if the businesses want to promote a special. And, um, we, it's, it's great, because we can control parts of the page. Now, people put out, post on there what they want. We can't control that. Our fulfillment in publications, we just completed our visitors' guide. This year, we did 45,000 because it was very popular. It's in about 431 locations in the valley with tracks by certified folders at the, uh, Phoenix Airport. And we've added a lot of, uh, elements to it that focus on our events and our purpose days, like a staycation in Fountain Hills. We put a public art focus in there, and you have that in your packet as well. And it's, it's, I hope it turns out to be a very successful guide. Our dining guide, this has been one of the most popular things. People pick it up all the time. Um, this year, we produced 5,000 copies. Last year, we did 2,500, but we have, we ran out very quickly. So, it's, uh, in a lot of kiosks, in our visitor's center. It's downloadable. It's on the website, et cetera. We put it in our event packets. The calendar of events that's produced monthly is another thing that we do. People tend to pick that up. And since we like to promote events, this is a good way to do it. Um, I've just introduced an e-newsletter with, uh, we're still building up the database. I'd love to send it to everybody, but I kind of need permissions, because, um, they're very particular if you just kind of, uh, pull a list and do it. And in this newsletter, we will promote events, and that's what we do. We also promote our weekly events, such as the Art on the Avenue Farmers Market, Zads in the Hill, and we put the music venues in there. So, and this is, we're just building up our subscribers off the website, and, and where we can get the databases. Uh, let's see. Uh, our niche market is weddings, as I mentioned. This has been a, a good buy for us. Hopefully, some of the hot leads are, are generating parks, weddings in the park, as well as this community center. The convention that I wanted to speak about was just the American, International Trail Symposium with American, the American Trail. And that'll be the 14th to the 16th. We, we're able to secure this conference because of, of our relationship with, with Fort McDowell. And then, like Olivia, is our event coming up? This will be really fun. And I'm done. I'm sorry. I gave you so much time.
That's okay. Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Yes, Councilwoman Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one, um, do, when you said that you have people sharing your ad and that they can get a little bit, maybe have a discount, how do you let the businesses know that that's available to all the businesses in Fountain Hills?
Well, generally what, and, and it's out there like, they're not sharing our, our ad, but what happens is, um, the publication will be selling, will sell the ad space directly to the businesses. So, that's, that's who's going out to the businesses and, and saying, and they're coming to us and saying, "Well, we're really, if you, if you take a, a position, we will, um, we're, they're gonna get a low, a lower rate." Like, instead of it being a thousand dollars, it'll be 800 dollars or 500 dollars. At the Arizona Collector's Guide, which is a publication for, uh, that, there's a lot of artwork in it, and we have, we took two pages. So, we paid for two pages, and that lowered the cost for the artists, all the artists who wanted to put their stuff in there. The ads in there are two, about $400 or something like that each. And we worked with Danny Willigrod and the Fountain Hills Artist Gallery on that. I've also talked to other people if they want, if they had an interest in being in it, and some have and some have not. So, that's how we do it. It's, we, we don't really do co-op advertising per se, because it's really, it's very messy life where you, you know, pay for case.
Any other questions? Yes, um, Council, Vice Mayor Elke?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Francesca Verghed, I, I like the site, and for those that are home, it's experiencefountainhills.org. Um, certainly encourage everyone to go to the site. There's a lot of information about the town. I do notice that on, on your, uh, page here, you have a link to the town, to the town's website, and, uh, certainly to, it looks like, uh, the Visitors Bureau and, um, other businesses and sites. I would think, Mayor, maybe we should look at perhaps having a link on the town's website pointing to the Visitors Bureau as well, so that if anyone's coming to the town of Fountain Hills, that they can, you know, they see, well, what's going on in the town. They're not gonna see a whole lot. We do have a calendar of events, yeah, of course. But I think pointing them in this direction and have something prominently placed on the town's website might be a good idea. I know that'll help as far as your rankings with Google as well.
That would, because the town side is always right first, because it's a .gov. And a lot of times, I will refer people back to the town site on events and things where you have more detailed information, and that those backlinks are very, very important to us.
Okay. Any other, Councilwoman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Two quick questions. On your website, I'm sure we keep track of the hits we ask.
Yes.
Do we also keep track of the, uh, the locales that they're coming from, Wisconsin?
Um, we can do that with the Google Analytics, and you can look at where, you know, which search engines they've used, and a lot of times you can see where their location is, geographic location.
That would be interesting to see.
Okay.
I would like to see that. And then, on your website, you're saying every business, even non-member bus, even non-Chamber businesses are listed on your website?
They, yes. All businesses can have a free listing. When we developed this site, um, the Maffet people loaded the Chamber, Chamber, um, businesses first, and it was a while ago, so those need to be updated, and businesses need to claim those. So, I would really look to the town for some support in getting this word out to all the businesses, you know, with either in their, in an email, or if they, you know, people with business licenses, if you have an email. And we're going, we're planning to do some ads, an ad in the newspaper, and also do some other promotion of it, because everybody can have a listing, and they should, because, and then, like, because people are Chamber members, they can have the Chamber logo. But everybody else, you can put your logo on there, et cetera. And I have information about what each level of sponsorship is worth, and then there are some premium positions, if people are interested in that, where you have like a rotating banner out there.
I think that's a totally awesome idea for the town. Good job, again, Francesca.
Thank you.
Councilwoman.
Francesca, thank you very much. Big fan of both you and the effort. Um, a question that you might not get asked too often, is there some calculation to figure out what your return on investment is, or, or, you know, where our baseline has been established, and how we've improved since we've been doing this program?
Um, it's, it's kind of hard to tell. I mean, I can tell you something like, well, we have 7 million impressions, not counting our online. But what is the value of it if you don't, if you're not counting, um, room nights or conferences or something like that? Perhaps we, you know, it's, it's a hard measurement, and it's somewhat intangible. I think we have, um, our visibility has improved. If I looked at my Facebook page, the, the visitor one, and looked at how many followers I had a year ago and what I have now, that's more than doubled. So, I think that's somewhat successful. I know when we, on our website, when we get the greatest hits during the, the fairs, we get a lot of traffic on there. I'm hoping that, I, I, I feel intuitively that it's doing well, but I don't really have a, a hard return on investment number. I'd love to have that. I'd love to have some really strong performance indicators. They're a little tricky when you're not, um, when you're not taking some revenue in that regard with conferences and booking room nights, which a CVB does, but it's Tourism Bureau is more image development, and, and therefore we keep working on our image and branding and promotion. And we, we kind of, um, co-tail with the other larger valley cities like Scottsdale.
And, Madam Mayor, as a follow-up, is there a way to measure if it's more image-related than ROI?
Yes, you know, you can actually, if you want, if you are interested in knowing how you're doing, you can actually finance a study. It costs, you know, five to $10,000 and find out what people know about your company, your brand. And we've done that. We've done a visitor impact study a, a while ago. But that, that's probably the way, that's the way you measure it. You actually do a survey, and you start looking at who's visited and how much they spent, et cetera.
Interesting.
So, you, you, it's possible, but it's, it's just a dollar expenditure. And we'd be happy to do that.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to, um, make a comment. When I do the mayor's, uh, mobile town hall, the most popular thing that I hand out is the dining guide. Everybody wants the dining guide. And that was great for the fair, because you have lots of visitors. And the second, uh, the second thing that I give out the most is the- the Small Visitor Guide. It's compact enough that people just tag to put it in their purse, in their pockets, they take that. And it found that that's bringing a lot of interest to our art because there's a lot of art in there. And there's great pictures in there of our art. So, keep up with those two things and- and those are great for our visitors.
Thank you. And this year we did put more emphasis on the art and we also put some QR codes about the art because now our public art collection has, um, QR codes that go to like a YouTube video for each piece. And Alan Fluffencamp is the voice on it and he explains what's why- what the artist was thinking and- and something about the piece. And so, we've tried to promote that more.
There's one of those on each of the plaques, correct?
I- I know the entire Centennial Circle is done and I started planning through the Fountain House.
That's good, okay.
Thank you very much.
Anything else? Alright, thanks Francesca. Alright. And, Ken?
Members of the council, we have Fountain- Fountain Hills Theater for a presentation.
Hi. Mayor, councilmembers, I'm Val Stasich and I've been a Fountain Hills resident now for twenty- residence- residence for twenty-eight years. I'm the executive director of Fountain Hills Theater. Um, yeah, okay. Okay, place him out. It did it, boing, boing. There we go.
Just thinking.
Hmm? Oh. I thought I was on it, I'm so sorry. Okay, now you know why I do theater. Uh, this was the first one, huh? Okay, alright, we sent a, mm. Okay, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine. Well, I wanna thank you for the opportunity, uh, I'm gonna- I'm gonna read this verbatim so it doesn't take long, I don't get off track. Thanks for the opportu- hmm, I didn't mean anything Francesca. Thanks for the opportunity to demonstrate where this year's partnership monies have been spent. As our First Lady stated at the Academy Awards a couple of weeks ago, "The performing arts lifts our spirits, broaden our minds. Every day through engagement in the arts, our children learn to open their imagination, to dream just a little bigger and to strive every day to reach those goals. It's vitally important to work," end quote. Fountain Hills has no other place for students and adults to, uh, experience the performing arts. And I wanna thank you for, uh, keeping the arts a priority in our community. Boing. Notice that the demographics show that forty-five percent of our ticket buyers come from Fountain Hills, twenty-one percent from Scottsdale, twelve percent from Phoenix and the remainder from all over the valley and state as well. This does not include performers, workshop students, volunteers and production staff who also come from many locations because of Fountain Hills Theater's fine reputation. They eat, shop and enjoy our found- fine town on a regular basis. Our visibility is pronounced on a variety of webpages and social networks. We can boast a high percentage of hits and online purchases. Boing. As a not-for-profit 501(c)(3) corporation, our budget is zero-based. That means that the total organizational budget, income and expenses are equal. This year's annual zero-based budget is six hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. Seventy-four percent of our total income is self-generated. And we're on the expense one, what happened to the income one? Maybe it's next. Um, I'm gonna see something. Yeah, I know. Seventy-four percent of our total income is self-generated and fourteen percent relies on grants and donations. Twelve percent is our town contract. And then I go backwards. Okay, our expense- our expenses are predominantly production, workshop and summer program costs at fifty-seven percent. This is the area where all town funding is allocated. Boom, boom. Our contract specifications were very clear. They did not include any salaries or benefits paid to individuals either on staff or part of paid production personnel, nor did it include any general and administrative overhead. This is hard to read and I apologize. But we're producing seventeen shows this fiscal year as well as workshops and summer camps. Our contracts specifically covered, and that's- that's within the red there, it specifically covered royalties, special engagements, costumes, sets and class instructors. The total budget for our program is three hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and four dollars. Of that amount, seventy-two thousand, two hundred and forty is covered by our partnership with the town while two hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-four is self-generated. So, this is clearly, this shows where every dollar has gone. Okay, this chart represents the total expense budget of the three hundred and thirty-six, where's this, three forty-four, where is it? Anyway, the total expense budget and the income percentages that cover those costs. Let me see if I have the right, okay, three forty-four, I must have mistyped on my little piece of paper that I'm reading to. So, it's three forty-four, one oh two. Uh, so you can see that sixty-nine percent of the production expenses are covered by our ticket sales and, um, I'm sorry, this was- this is not the right slide. Okay. I had- we had sent out a, um, a- a- another one of these, that was kind of different. Alright, a- anyway, this- this is- this is accurate. Uh, this- this shows where our- our income is coming from as it pertains to our production budget. So, so that's- that's what this is about. And what it- what it shows is that the town contract is actually, uh, the seventy-two thousand is- this percentage is, it's the twenty-one, twenty-one percent of the income. Okay. This is the last one, this is the report of our fiscal year activity to date. Uh, the tickets sold with ten shows completed and seven more yet to come is over nine thousand attendees, which is eighty percent average of our total capacity. So, this shows what ha- has already been allocated to us in the first three quarters and what that mon- those monies have gone to. The percentage, uh, of attendance, of average attendance will increase this year, uh, before the year is done. We have seven more productions to come. And the Full Monty is already at a hundred percent attendance and we've extended it into another weekend. Hmm. Okay, Fountain Hills Theater is now entering its twenty-seventh season. We're proud of the work we've done and our community for its continued support over the years. Our population in Fountain Hills is over, just over twenty-two thousand people. The town contract of seventy-two thousand, two hundred and forty amounts to about three dollars per person, per year, or twenty-five cents per person, per year. That's not a bad investment to keep this award-winning theater in operation while continuing to attract new people to Fountain Hills every day. Thank you, questions, sorry, I'm better on stage.
Questions from council? Questions from council? Questions?
Okay, please.
Okay, I guess I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, I was gonna jump in. Val on, uh, hi, thank you very much for all the work you do, uh, tremendous effort and-
Thank you.
It's a hoot.
Thanks, it's fun.
Um, that last one where you have, uh, the funded and budgeted per show?
Yes. I'm sorry, I went out a bit too soon.
No, no worries. Um, but basically, I'm asking, just from a business standpoint, your shows do make money or you pretty much budget exactly what and then divide that out to figure out the ticket sales? Or, you know, I'm familiar with the 501(c)(3), you're allowed to make money on-
Right, right. Well, what ends up happening is most of our grants and, now, a- a lot of the shows, when you- when you look at our actual bu- budgets, our consolidated budget and then the individual show budget, a lot of the shows appear to be losing money. Um, and that's because there are things within the show budget, which is executive, uh, artistic director salaries and so on. There's a lot of expense as you saw, the seventy-two out of three hundred and something thousand. But what happens is the donations that we receive from corporations, our fundraising efforts, our, um, individual donations, those are basically going into, unless specified for a particular show, unless it's specified for underwriting for a specific show, it goes into our D and A, uh, our general fund. And then, that money brings in the balance. So, even though the shows may lose money, our mission isn't producing shows and teaching children. So, our mission is foremost, but everyone still wants that telephone answered when they call for a ticket. So, we have to keep our D and A going and our copy machine and our insurance and everything else. So, our expenses are all, um, kinda like this, when you look at D and A and- and so on, it- it relies heavily on the grants and donations.
Mayor, as a follow-up, then, for example, you're extending the Full Monty-
Yeah.
-controversy show.
The show sales.
Good show sales as well. Um, is- is that gonna make money for you, the fact that you've extended it on?
Um, it's, yeah, probably, it's a more expensive show to do. So, uh, everything about it, the royalties and- and so on, were all- all more expensive. Um, now that we've extended it, of course, the royalties are more expensive because now we have to pay for that extension as well, the musicians for that extra weekend and so on. So, our expenses will go up. The show's going to define, it's, uh, it- it may not make a lot of money but we should, but even.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Uh, okay, I have a couple of questions. Um, even though you do this with the- with the, you know, the money, you have to, you say you do two budgets but in the end it all is in the same pot and you have to take all the expenses and all the productions and all the salaries and all the compensation. So, even though you say you divide up the money, in the end, if you need the money on one hand, you have to take it from the other hand.
Uh, robbing from Peter to pay Paul, for twenty-eight years, sometimes that does come true. Uh, we have a consolidated budget, we also have a D and A budget. And, uh, we rely, we- we strictly follow that D and A budget and we have budgets for every individual show. So, uh, for instance, I know that the money that the town has given us has paid for royalty sets, costumes and so on. It is in that show's budget for that purpose. Um, so, no- none of the, if- if- if that's your concern, none of the- none of the town's money, uh, is ever used for D and A salaries or benefits or anything that has to do with personnel. Um, now, we're- our record-keeping is pretty impeccable and I would be more than happy to share that with you anytime.
But if the- if the money is going into the production and out of the production, there's compensation for directors and choreographers, then the money is- is in, in essence, going to pay somebody during that production and not just for the actual productions, like royalties.
Well, that's part of the production, I can't have a show without a choreographer or a director.
And this, um, definitely whether it's about the compensation that they get, which is included, which compensation is kind of, is not a salary.
It's a separate- it's a separate, a totally separate line item, um, Mayor. The, um, I- I- I guess the best way I can describe it is I know when- when monies are allocated to a youth show, for instance, uh, Wells Fargo will under- underwrite our part, impart our Christmas program. Um, with the shows, i- i- I wish I shouldn't have shut this down, I- I'm sorry. The shows, as you would have, you could see on that chart, uh, were, are very, very clearly defined. And the, um, the monies that we spend as an organization and the monies we earn on tickets exceeds the monies, um, allocated by the town. The town's monies help us continue to exist.
Yes, I- I- I understand the budget system.
Right, right, but there is no- there's no overlap. So, I, the, what we pay for, what we pay for-
We're circling over where the money goes.
Oh, I, yeah, no, it's in the show, the show budget, the-
And that's interesting, it's all, it's all in the same pot, no matter which way you look at it. You need one, you go to the other, you have to pay all your bills. I mean, you know, it's just like in your home, you have to pay your electric, you have to pay all your expenses, you got your entertainment fees, but, you know, if you need more for your electric, you gotta move money around. So, you know, uh, 'cause it shows that exactly your expenses are exactly paid off through the penny by these. So, uh, let me ask you another question, um, I was just looking at the, um, I was just looking at the total budget, which is six oh seven, four forty, and then I was just doing the math and, um-
Mayor, if we could, that- that could perhaps pull up the slides so if you can see what you're referring to, to sort.
Yeah, but I'm the- I'm gonna probably be bouncing back and forth here, so that's gonna be a little hard to do.
Well, then, you know what, I have hard copies.
Well, we- we all have hard copies, I know, but I don't.
Is there a problem? Has it done the same?
No.
I just have a couple of questions because-
That's fine, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're welcome. So, this is a presentation on what you've already done and I'm just trying to understand your budget. So, I have some questions about your budget. On your total expenses, it says six hundred and seven, four forty, okay, on the expenses slide? Yes. Okay. And then, it's- it's the- the other slide which shows the five incomes you have and that comes to exactly three forty-four, one oh two, which you said was your expense total. And then, if you add in the fundraising income and the corporate individual grants, if you listen on the other one, your total comes to six twenty-one, four forty. So, it's just, it doesn't balance with your budget, I just wanted to bring that out to you. So, maybe there's a little error in the math or something that you've copied something. But it doesn't- it doesn't come out to the total six oh seven, four forty. W- I'm sorry, on which one? On- on which chart, I'm- I'm-
The total budget says six, six hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and forty.
That's right, that's the income.
Add up all of the expenses that you have, the tuition, the town contract, the program ads, the underwriting, the ticket sales, that's three hundred and forty-four thousand, a hundred and two. And then, if you add to that the fundraising income of two hundred and four thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight and then you add to that the seventy-three thousand, you get six hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and-
It's two hundred and thirty, the fundraising expenses. There are three parts here, um-
That's the other part, but I minus from that what you already have on there, so.
The total income for the organization, the entire consolidated income budget is six hundred and seven, four forty.
I know, and I-
And that is what's broken down-
I understand that.
-into self-generated, into underwriting corporate and individual and into town contract money. The next page, which is the exact same amount, is D and A, production and workshop and fundraising expenses of twenty-five thousand.
And all I'm saying is that when you add up everything that you put for expenses, you get a different total than what your budget's all. And I- I'm not circling over it, I'm just asking you to look back at your budget because there's s- there's some, something wrong there because it doesn't add up. But you can have your, you can have your, um, financial people look at that and- and work it out.
Alright, I- I, well, I- I, okay, thank you.
And I can show you after the meeting if you want, what I'm specifically talking about. It just doesn't add up, if you add up all the pages.
I- you- you don't add all the pages, uh, that's fine, Madam-
I understand that, I understand.
Thank you.
I understand exactly how it works and I've minus everything out that's out and added it several times, I'll double check, it's always different.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, the other question I wanna ask is, do you give any kind of discounts for Fountain Hills residents? For tickets?
No, I, no, no, we don't, we do, we give senior discounts on Thursdays. We give multiple family discounts in our workshops and classes.
Okay.
But as far as the tickets, we have- we have a youth age of seventeen as opposed to most paid places that have twelve.
Okay.
And, um, we, no, no, I-
Okay, and just- just as, as was asked of the Chamber, um, you know, you're claiming that you're bringing in tourism and do you have analytics that you could show us?
Yes, I do, I do have a lot of analytics I could show you, I have, um, I have plenty of that.
That's to satisfy us with that so that we could, uh, I believe-
I believe our entire, uh, last year at this time, I provided e- everyone on the council with a packet that looked similar to this. And in this packet is a complete breakdown of our web hits and our websites that we belong to and our ticketing agen- and our ticketing agencies and where people buy tickets. And, um, so if, I, I don't know if you keep any of your paperwork. I can certainly provide you again.
So I would appreciate.
I can certainly provide this to you again.
I have a general question.
Sure.
These presentations that we're having tonight are to review the contracts that were agreed to and then the reporting to us on what we asked them to do with the funding that we contacted them. Is that correct?
Yes, and the council has the option to ask any questions related to any of the slides, just, just as we did for the chamber and the other groups. Did you have a question? Okay. Anyone else have a question?
Mayor, if I may, thank you.
Councilman with it.
Um, if there aren't any questions from, um, council members, um, Val, I'd like to thank you for the presentation. Um, the purpose of having a semi-annual report is to account for the dollars in these contracts.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I view this contract as the town managers alluded to as a fee for service. We provide certain dollars. You've accounted specifically for those dollars for the service that your organization is providing. So I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
The service you provide in keeping the theater going is an invaluable service for this town. Um, it adds value to this town. It adds to the economics of this town. And maybe we should consider, um, this fiscal year, using these dollars from economic development, because it adds value to economic development as well as theatrical production. So I appreciate what you've done and, um, thank you as well. Francesca, I didn't have an opportunity to thank you as well. Same, same deal. You guys get a big bang from the buck. And once again, um, I think at the end of the day, when we talked about these service contracts, um, they're, they're not what seems to be portrayed as the sexy argument in the community these days, which is that their donations, their contributions, their subsidies, their giveaways. We get value for the money we pay, and that's what the decisions are all about. Now, I read an article in the Arizona Republic not too long ago, comments that were made from the Gias, that said that there has been no accountability. And clearly, looking at this report, there's accountability. That article went on to say that the only contract that is, 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 uh, is accounting is the chamber or tourism. And I'm not being critical. You guys have accounting. But let us be perfectly clear, from what I've seen tonight, there's accountability for the dollars that we're spending here, and there's simply value. And I could probably measure Councilman H, return our investment more directly from the theater than I can from a tourism contract. Nonetheless, I support both. I think they're vital for the community. Thank you.
Uh, Councilman H, Councilman H. Just real quick, Val, I really liked the slide that says the town contract, uh, twenty twelve, thirteen. The way you have it broken out with that specific column saying contract total. So whoever you have doing it, books that makes it real clear.
Well, the books, yeah, I know. Yes, thank you. You have a wonderful accountant.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, Val, there's, there's been some questions posed here tonight that, um, perhaps maybe you didn't expect as far as certain questions. And I, I appreciate that you have the analytics report there. I'm sure you've provided that, um, in the past two years or when it was. Anything that you provide to the council or through the town manager, or if you provide to individual council members, I'd appreciate if you supply us all with a copy. And if there's any explanation to any of the things that you discussed here tonight, if you could provide it to all of us so that we're all on the same page as far as the information that you have. And I do, uh, uh, agree that all of these service contracts that we have, there has been accountability as far as the dollars that have been spent. Hasn't been any single one. I think they've all been accountable in providing us with, uh, an explanation as to where those monies were spent, is whether that's on a monthly basis, quarterly basis, or semi-annually basis. So, uh, I appreciate you making the presentation here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you for coming, and I look forward to getting that information from you. Ken?
Mayor Cavano, members of the council, um, we have Jump Start Biz, which is another fee for service that we have for economic development programs that we've, uh, assisted in funding.
Good evening, Mayor and council. It's a pleasure to be in front of you once again. Uh, for the record, I'm Mike Tyler. I'm one of five partners with Arizona Business Advisors, and we manage, uh, Jump Start Biz, the Fountain Hills Business Incubator. So if I can find my presentation, then we'll get started. Okay, just by way of background, we have been operating the incubator now for about twelve months. It was, uh, initially set up kind of as an experiment to, um, see if there was enough demand and support in Fountain Hills in order to create jobs. The, the ultimate goal is to create jobs in, in town. If you look around what's happening in Arizona and the valley with incubators, there's been a resurgence in business incubators in the last few years. There are currently approximately fifteen incubators in the valley alone. And they have a different area of focus. They're structured very differently. And they all operate in different industry segments. Ours, I think, is unique in that we have a very structured work process. Most of the other incubators are somewhat loose-knit in their formation, and people can come and go as they please. They do not have the type of structured program that we have. And I, and I will go through that in a little bit more detail later. Um, Arizona Business Advisors, we have become recognized in the valley as an operator of multiple incubators, as well as operating Jump Start Biz here. We operate a business incubator in Tempe. We're also in discussions with two other cities in the valley to open incubators with them. We have, uh, established relationships with, um, Arizona State University. We are well-connected with the Arizona Commerce Authority. And all of these things will eventually lead to better, uh, visibility and opportunities for Jump Start Biz in Fountain Hills. I'm going to not spend a lot of time on this slide, because it's very detailed, but just to give you some sense of the process that we lead our clients through. It's typically a five-step process, which can typically last twelve to eighteen months. But it, it kind of starts off with validating the business idea, and then moves to validating that idea in the marketplace. And once those two things have been done, then we'll look to see, how do we grow that business? How do we make it bigger? How do we improve it? How do we build operational excellence in the business? And lastly, how do we make it financially sustainable? These are things that typically small businesses do not think about. They work in their business as opposed to on their business. We, we make them stand back and look at these four areas. Simply put, we add structure, focus, and accountability to the passion and creativity that most entrepreneurs have. We found that this has been a powerful combination that, uh, drives success in business. And we have learned that over thirty years of experience. Currently, uh, our, our initial goal was to have five members in the incubator, uh, within the first year. We currently have seven members, and I'll tell you a little bit later about who they are. And we're hoping to sign up one more very shortly. We've had very favorable feedback on added value from those clients. And currently, those seven, seven members have the potential to create approximately fifteen to twenty jobs within Fountain Hills. Um, I'm just gonna, uh, I'm just gonna run through this quickly. I don't think I'm gonna have time to go over each of the individual members with you. But here are the seven members and kind of where they sta- they stand in the, in the process that we have. And I'll just point out, Mapit was the one that, uh, on the top there, that Francesca was talking about, that, uh, did the site for the Visitors Bureau. And they have been very successful with, uh, other cities in the valley as well. And if you look at where they, they are in the process, they're in, kind of in step three, which is the point at which we begin to figure out how to grow them. They're the sort of business that have national capabilities. And if you look at the bottom, we have two other companies that are kind of at the same phase that roast them up, which does, um, um, barbecue accessories that roast chilies and vegetables and wide-up installation that installs, um, wireless and, that wires homes and offices for security and entertainment. And they both have come in at that early-stage business, as opposed to being startup companies. The five in the middle are really startup companies. We would like to get more of those early-stage companies as opposed to real, uh, um, startup companies. But we'll take whatever we can at this point in time. Two of the businesses, Sidewinder Cycles and Concerned Home, have launched already. They have rented facilities in town, and they are up and running. And we are optimistic that the other two in the middle there are also gonna be launched within the next, the next few months. I'm gonna run through and pass by quickly these testimonials. I think you've probably had the opportunity to read them. Um, so I will not spend any time on that. In terms of where we are, we need to figure out, we need to move from that experiment that we started to a more sustainable, ongoing structure. And basically, we need to increase funding in order to do that. Um, we have been operating, Arizona Business Advisors have been operating very much in terms of almost a volunteer-type basis to run the incubator for the last twelve months. On average, over the last six months, we have spent approximately fifty-five hours a month on Jump Start Biz. And the contribution that we get from the city is, uh, three hundred and seventy-five dollars a month. So you, you can do the math on that. And then lastly, we need to move, if, if we move ahead, we need to move from an opportunistic to a more targeted approach. We, we have not really aggressively marketed Jump Start Biz. People have essentially found us, and the result of that has been opportunistic in terms of the type of businesses that have come into the incubator. We do have an opportunity, I think, to take the economic development plan that, that Ken has written and focus on the target segments that he has outlined in that plan. That way, we can much more focus our efforts towards bringing in the type of businesses and growing the type of businesses that will lead to, uh, white-collar, clerical, and mid-management level jobs in Fountain Hills. So, uh, our way is that the experiment has been completed. I think we have demonstrated that it can be successful in growing jobs in Fountain Hills, and we are hopeful that we can continue to receive support from you. Thank you, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Questions? Questions? Councilman H.
Thanks, Mike. Excellent job. Um, average small business, what kind of growth sales? And I realize coming out of the gate, it's, it's nominal at best, but if you were to give an average?
It, it's hard to give an average, because some of them are truly startup companies that, you know, have not even been in revenue. So they come to us with an idea, and then we take them into revenue over a three to six-month period. Some of the other businesses that you saw there, probably the biggest one has a revenue of about seven hundred thousand dollars. And the smallest one is probably in the forty to fifty thousand dollar range.
So the largest, excuse me, Mayor, um, so the largest one making seven hundred thousand are the tax revenue on something like that, two point six percent, so roughly twenty thousand dollars?
Yes.
Little bit less?
Right.
And likewise, for the lower end, two point six percent? Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Good.
Um, Mike, the size of startup businesses, if current business, you know, is having trouble and they come to you, you could also help them to get themselves back on track. I know a lot of people start businesses and they're not really ready. They don't have a plan, and that's why a lot of them fail. But you also help those too, don't you?
Absolutely. We will do that, and we have, um, we, we did start a program of inviting a certain number of businesses every month for business lunch, to explain what we did. We do offer free consultation, initial consultation for businesses that are in trouble or need support or need advice, and, uh, that is certainly available, yes.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Councilman with it.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, um, thank you for your presentation. Um, I've had an opportunity to visit with you a couple of times, and I appreciate your time and walking me through your process. Um, I know when we talk about ROI, it's very difficult in that, uh, a lot of these are startup companies. However, I, I have, uh, chatted with a couple of your clients that have launched their businesses, and they're basically, shared with me, they wouldn't have been able to launch their business without the guidance of the incubator. So I think inherently, in, in those types of statements and successes, I think there's kind of a, an abstract ROI, although it's hard to get our arms wrapped around. So I just wanted to share that with you, and thanks for your presentation.
Oh, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thanks, Mike.
Okay, thank you.
Ken?
Mayor Cavano, members of the council, we have, uh, the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Scottsdale. Give a presentation.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Tom Shaughnessy, the Senior Vice President of Operations for the Boys and Girls Clubs of Greater Scottsdale. And tomorrow, Persevich, our Youth Development Supervisor at the McKee Branch here in Fountain Hills, is going to, uh, share the presentation with me. So let me just get to there. And, uh, the presentations, or the slides that you see tonight are a little bit different than the ones that we had a little bit before. Try to, uh, 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 color it down a little bit, just to get, get through in five minutes. Um, uh, so first, just wanna start with, uh, just a reminder of who we are. Uh, Boys and Girls Clubs, uh, our mission is to, uh, provide a positive impact, uh, for youth in the Greater Scottsdale area and in our Native American communities, uh, basically by helping them reach their ultimate potential. And we do that through, uh, providing youth development services and really focusing around academic success, healthy lifestyles, and good character. Um, as far as the organization goes, uh, we serve, uh, over seventeen thousand youths between the ages of five and eighteen, uh, through our club and outreach programs. We have nine, uh, uh, full-size branches, um, including the, uh, Mary Ellen and Roger McKee Branch in Fountain Hills. And, uh, we have a scene center here in Fountain Hills. Um, we offer a number of different programs, uh, and we've been, uh, awarded, uh, some different awards from Boys and Girls Clubs of America. Uh, here at the McKee Branch here in Fountain Hills, started in nineteen ninety-six, uh, in the school, and then, uh, built the building, which opened in two thousand and four. Um, serve over a thousand, uh, young people a year, uh, last year. And, uh, the budget for, uh, the McKee Branch here in Fountain Hills, seven hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty. Uh, we generate, uh, revenue through the, uh, fees, uh, for service of about four hundred and eighty-three thousand. Uh, the remaining two hundred and eighty thousand comes from, uh, the town, as well as grants, special rent fundraising, individual and corporate donors. Um, last year, uh, when we were looking at the kind of services that we were looking to provide for the town, we took a look at the, uh, town goals and initiatives and, and, uh, and what we were offering, um, and kind of tailored, uh, some of the programs to be, to fit in with, with your goals. Uh, the one I would, uh, point to, uh, the most is really looking at, uh, the area of, uh, public service and volunteerism. We have a number of programs, uh, that fit in that area, uh, that tomorrow we'll kind of go over, uh, a little, in a little bit more detail. Uh, just as a reminder, um, we have, uh, all of our program areas are broken down into three main categories. And just a reminder of academic success, we've got eighty thousand, uh, in the town contract, thirty thousand, uh, in the academic success area, thirty in good character and citizenship, and twenty in healthy lifestyles. And tomorrow, we'll share some of those results.
Thank you. Um, so in regards to the programs that we're running in these core areas, uh, under academic success, which is part of what the town's funding goes to, we are running currently a power hour program. This program runs every single day after school. Members have the opportunity to go to our homework room, our power hour room, and receive homework help and also get extra work seats and lessons in order to enrich their brains per se and help them along with the, uh, study that they're working on in school. Um, in regards to figuring out the success of our programs, we usually use two different methods. One of them is a pre and post-test method. Um, so it's like a test, and we administer it to the kids at the beginning of a program and at the end of the program. And this test has about ten to twelve questions on it about the content, um, related to the program that they're in. Um, if it's not a pre and post-test that we're administering, we administer an attitude service. Um, if it's not a pre and post-test that we're administering, we administer an attitude survey. And in this attitude, attitude survey, uh, we ask the kids questions in regards to how they feel the program has helped them, um, where they see, uh, the best parts for them are, and if they like it. Um, so for our power hour homework room, we use an attitude survey. And we've listed a couple percentages from our attitude survey. I'm just gonna leave them off really quick for you. Ninety-three percent of the members who attend pow- uh, uh, sorry. Ninety-three percent of our members at the Boys and Girls Club attend power hour, one or more days a week. Eighty-four percent of the members say that power hour has helped them improve their grades in school. Ninety-three percent of the members say the staff in the power hour room are helpful. Ninety-one percent of the members say that last year's grades were As and Bs. And ninety-three percent of the members say their future grades will be As and Bs. We've seen a huge increase in our power hour homework room this year, um, alone, going from first quarter all the way to the beginning of third quarter. We've increased over twenty-five members, which is a very big deal. Another, uh, program we run under academic success is Money Matters. This is a program that we do pre and post-test for, so I've listed here the pre and post-test course. So if you look under the pre and post-test, it shows you on the pretest how many of the kids answered each question correctly. So if you compare the two, you can definitely see that there was a huge increase in knowledge in the program, um, due to the instruction and activities and the guidance that, um, was given to them through this eight-week session. Okay. Uh, under good character and citizenship, uh, we have already run our Young Kids Program. There was a twenty percent increase in knowledge, and I did want to point out, um, one of our big in- biggest increases in knowledge, as I think is very important, um, was the question we did, uh, pre and post-test for this. Um, every person's vote counts. From pretest to post-test, thirty percent more members said that their vote counted in our post-test survey. Uh, moving on to our torch club, uh, to give you a sort of little background, it's a club for eleven to thirteen-year-olds focused on community service. Currently, we have seven members in it who have performed over fifty hours of community service within the town of Fountain Hills. It helps with, uh, our Keystone Club, and the Keystone Club mentors them. And I'll explain Keystone in just a second. Um, but also, these torch club members have the opportunity to attend the State Torch Club Conference in Arizona, which is a leadership con- conference for kids their age to meet other kids around the state of Arizona who also want to participate in community service and fundraising and get really good to interact with them. So beginning at such a young age, wanting to serve the community, we feel is extremely great. Um, our Keystone Club, which I had just mentioned, is a high school age community service group. Just in the past four months, the four months, they've can- done eight hundred and sixty-one combined community service hours throughout the town of Fountain Hills, as well as, uh, different cities within Fountain Hills. Just to throw a few out there, within Fountain Hills, we've done Halloween in the Hills. We've also, also helped at the food fair, the Fountain Hills Art Fair, um, Fountain of Youth Fiesta, which just occurred, uh, last month. But outside Fountain Hills, we've, uh, helped create this agenda center, a center for battered women. Um, we've also done the, uh, Workers' Party Community Center. So those are just a few things that our Keystone Club has been doing. We also are attending a national conference, National Leadership and Community Service Conference, at the end of this month, where they get to work with, um, a bunch of teens in high school throughout the United States who come together to learn more ways to help their community and their town. I feel like I skipped one. You guys have one more on your seat? Yeah, that's what I thought. Um, I believe on the last one, it talks about our Passports to Manhood program. Um, and I did list on there the pre and post-test results. So it's the same thing as our Money Matters program. If you take a look at the questions, you can see where they've, um, really been successful. They've learned a lot through this program, just gauging and how many answers they got correct in our pretest. Based on how much they've learned and answered correct in our post-test. We've actually started running this program again. Um, the kids really enjoy it, um, and they get to learn more about what it's like to grow up and face the difficulties that our communities are facing, uh, these days. And it's been a very successful program. Oh, there we go. I'm going quick. Sorry. Oh, and Triple Play. Triple Play is a program we run every single day. Um, we do this where we have staff members create activities and games for the kids, and the kids can create activities and games that we run with them as well. So we use their input as well as the staff's input, and we do different fun, exciting games, games that you guys probably have never heard of, um, that have crazy names. But we make sure that all the kids are engaging in physical activity every single day, whether it's running back and forth or creating teams and playing games against each other. Um, that's what our Triple Play is, and that happens every single day at the Boys and Girls Club, whether it's during the school year, break, or summer. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Uh, questions? Questions, uh, Vice Mayor Elke?
Thank you. Um, are there any, uh, discounts offered to Fountain Hills residents for membership?
No, uh, it's a twenty-five dollar membership per year, and we have, uh, all of our programs are, uh, flat fees. But, uh, depending on, uh, yield, we do have a, uh, scholarship program, tuition assistance program.
Okay, wonderful. And, um, the, the money that is spent in the, in the various different programs there, um, you have the equal amounts, there's thirty thousand, thirty thousand, twenty thousand. Those, those are exact numbers that go to the various programs, is that, is that correct? Not rounding, I guess, is what I'm asking.
Right, right. I mean, that's kind of what we dedicate for those areas, and that includes, you know, staff salaries, program supplies, manuals, all those kind of things.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone?
Here, if I may. Thank you for your pres- thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Um, your, um, your pre-post test results are, are impressive. Oh, you must be doing, doing something right. Um, well, excuse me, you're doing a lot right, but specifically with respect to those, those increases. You know, as Councilman El- I mean, Vice Mayor Elke, um, just alluded to, we have the academic success, good character, citizenship, health, lifestyles programs. At the end of the day, wh- wh- where do you think, what is the greatest value to the youth? And then, how does that translate to the community by having youth have an opportunity to experience these programs? If you may, either one of you. Flip a coin.
Uh, um, so are you asking which topic is more beneficial to the youth?
I'm just, just, just putting them all together, um, these types of educational programs. How do you think they add value to, to youth? And how does that translate to advantages to youth in our community and, and, and our community in general?
Okay, absolutely. Um, these programs are beneficial to the youth because they are educational programs, but they're slightly different to what they're learning in school. Um, also, at the Boys and Girls Club, we try to make sure they're still learning, but not in a school-like setting, so they're not sitting in a chair, writing notes. So the reason that these programs are beneficial is because we have the kids up, moving, participating in activities every single day, getting out in the community and actually practicing what they learned inside the Boys and Girls Club. So something that they learn in Money Matters, for example, is how to manage money. You might not think that a twelve-year-old needs to think about managing money, but they do. So, um, some of these kids are getting allowances, and we teach them what a want versus a need is. We show them how to start their own bank account, use their own check register. And then we actually take them to a bank, and they get to mock set up their own account. And they, we insert, um, a hundred dollars into their account, and they manage that money throughout the course of this program. And at the end, they bring to us, um, everything that they spent on, what to want, what to need. And it's more of a hands-on way for them to learn. Um, and that's just an example of one of our programs. Um, but I think it's beneficial for them because they get to learn in a different way. They get to learn from someone who's not a teacher. They're learning from someone who's a twenty-one-plus instructor, um, or they have a mentor in the room who's one of our junior staff who's between fourteen and eighteen years old. So they get to learn from someone different. And then they can translate these things that they learn into everyday life and talk about it with their friends. We even have kids who come into the club specifically just for these programs, who aren't attending our after-school program, but they want to come because they want to be in Money Matters, or they want to be in Passports to Manhood, which we nickname Man Club because the kids love it that much. So it's beneficial in a learning standpoint, and beneficial because we're bringing other people in to learn in a different way.
Thank you. Just relative to a question I had asked earlier. Do you think that, obviously, your pre-post test indicates this learning occurring. Is there any evidence that this learning is transferring to the, the environment, the community, outside of, of the laws of the Boys and Girls Club? I know that's hard to measure, but I think in your, in your attitude assessment increases, I think that, that would be a correlation there, but just in general, it could address that.
Right, I, I think, um, you know, that the question of ROI is, uh, is a question that we're always looking at
Tomorrow we'll see a young person, uh, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade. It's a mentor, it's someone they can come back to year after year, someone that we can guide along. Uh, so it's a combination of the actual programs itself and the relationship with that, uh, with that staff person. And as it, to translate into the community, when you look at, um, uh, plug coming, but we have our, uh, Celebrate Youth, uh, Dinner and Gala this Saturday where we, uh, recognize, uh, each of our clubs, our Youth of the Year candidates. And if we can keep those kids involved as they get into their teen years, which we have some specific, uh, uh, initiatives to do. When you hear the stories of those, uh, of those teens, they really talk about the staff, first of all, but then the programs that they learn. I mean, when you talk about, uh, high school kids giving eight hundred hours in community service, um, that's, that's an impact on the community. When you talk about those Youth of the Year, uh, uh, members who, uh, then go into the community, get a job, are, are, are good citizens in the community, that's, that's where the real impact comes.
Very good. Thank you for your presentation and thanks for all the hard work you did out there.
Chris, just one more, one more question. The monies that are paid for each of these programs, is that the only funds that go to support those programs or does the Boys and Girls Club contribute additional monies to run them?
Yes, we did, yes. We, uh, it's a, it's, it's not a fully subsidized by the town, the, the combination of those programs is, uh, there's other funds that we use to, uh, to complete them.
Do you know the percentage of the town's contribution to the town that goes to fund these programs?
Um, I don't. It's, it's probably, it's at least fifty percent of, uh, uh, of the town, uh, funding that goes directly towards these programs.
I mean, that's for each of the three programs?
Correct, correct. Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, I, I just, I, I'm really happy to see all the community service that you do, giving back. And I know that that's really valuable because the kids start out young and give back to the community. And I, all the programs that you have there, I participated in some of those and it was had, basically had the kids along, along with me. Um, and also I, I talked extensively to DJ Law about the programs and, and how everything is running. And I was very pleased to hear from him that no child is ever turned away because they don't, their parents don't have the money. And I think that is, that's a great value to our community. Um, I, I'm also glad that you, you do run quite a few fundraisers to raise money on your own, to expand your program and facilitate the programs that you have. And then you had a really big fundraiser at the Duffy's House and I think that was a very big success. Um, and also-
Which showcased some of the teams, as you, you saw, which some of the performing arts, yeah.
Were really great, especially the acapella.
Yeah.
The girls sang, that was really impressive. But I can see by all the generous people that came that it has to be a great success. Look at Duffy's who donated everything. And so I know you're having a big fundraiser on Saturday and so thank you for coming and I will see you on Saturday.
Awesome. Thank you.
And now we'll go to call to the public. One more.
Oh, one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, food bank. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Didn't mean to skip you. You know, I wouldn't do that.
The Boys and Girls Club also has helped with the food bank, so we thank them also. At the happen, this, my name is David Iverson and, um, we are just about to finish our ninth year as the extended hand food bank. And it has been a real, uh, uh, pleasure on our part to work with the community of Fountain Hills. And, uh, if you happened to catch the paper today, um, Jenny Hildebrand, who is the, uh, CEO of, of, uh, Arizona, um, Food Banks, wrote this article about hungry people in Arizona increased during two thousand twelve. Um, fortunately, we are, at Fountain Hills, we're not in the stats that all of Arizona is in. Um, I think papers that you have in your hand tonight show the amount of people that we do serve. Um, if you look at that, you see that the highest is the children from zero to twenty. And, um, then it, it runs neck and neck with the age group of forty to fifty and then the seniors, sixty and older. And I wondered about the forty and fifty and that would be where the, most of the unemployment, uh, in our community fall into that age group. So, again, we're able to help, um, people during difficult times. Um, as a report tonight of where the money has gone, uh, the twenty-five hundred, uh, per month that the food bank receives from the town, um, we use that money toward our leases and utilities. And, um, as I shared with the manager and the letter, um, it really helps to be able to assure people that we will be here next month. And, uh, all of the things that we work with are donated, um, from our community. Uh, we charge nothing for anything that we do. So of our two hundred and some thousand dollar budget last year, um, just the breakdown of, of where that money came from, um, it wasn't our budget that was expenses, in, in, income and expenses. Um, one percent or five thousand came from businesses. Twelve percent of our income came from churches, or twenty-three thousand of that. Uh, clubs gave one percent of fifty-three hundred. Foundations, eight percent at sixteen thousand five. Fundraisers at twenty-seven hundred dollars. And grants, um, amount of the seventeen percent, which includes, which is thirty-five thousand, which includes the thirty thousand, um, some odd dollars that the town helps us with. Um, and that's really important to us, um, because twice in the last month, in fact, just one yesterday, I was turned down again and rejected as far as grants because, uh, from outside our community, because Fountain Hills shouldn't have any need. And, um, so it's really difficult to, um, solicit money from outside Fountain Hills because most people don't seem to understand, except the ones that live here, that we do have needs beyond, um, ourselves. And so consequently, individuals in our community gave us the balance of our budget, or fifty-seven percent, um, coming in through, um, tax credit through fifty dollar a month. There's one lady that ever since I took over the food bank nine years ago, has faithfully spent fifty dollars. Doesn't sound like a lot, but that's six hundred dollars a year and, and God bless her for her faithfulness to us. So, anyway, um, I thank you for your support of us. Thank you for, um, hearing about what we do. And if you haven't attended our fish fry as a fundraiser for the food bank on Friday night, you're welcome to come and attend that. And, um, about six dollars of everything that we raise on Friday night goes to help the food bank. So, thank you.
Question? Uh, Councilman Brown.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you very much for what you do for the town. I think you greatly needed service. As I look at your chart from July to December, it's month, 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 papered off. It's, it's fewer in the month of December than it was in July. Is that because of people moving out of town or is the economy getting a little stronger, which would be a blessing for all of us? Can you explain why, why it's slightly lower now than it was in July?
Um, July and August were, was high and the reason being is that school was out. And so we, we jumped, we spiked during the summertime with families, um, coming to the food bank. Um, and consequently, also because of what the school does as far as backpacks, we're working out a deal that during the summertime, we will carry that program on for children. Um, that will have a extra amount of food that will buy just specifically for children during the summertime. Um, papering off, but yeah, I looked at the December stats. I don't know that the numbers, actually the, we probably should have kept track of all the turkeys and all the special, um, gifts that they gave out. So that would just be food boxes. So probably December would have been double if we would have kept track of all the, uh, extra food we gave out because of the holidays, December, November and December.
Well, I was more in hopes of you saying, yeah, the economy's getting stronger and the people are getting stronger and better, but thank you for your service.
Thank you. Unfortunately, new people are coming to us every week.
Councilman, yes?
I think, thank you first off for what you do as well. Uh, what is your, your cost per meal delivered?
Um, goodness.
I remember hearing that-
It used to be forty dollars for a food box. We don't deliver meals. It's, they come to us and get, receive a banana box, which is full of food. And it was a couple of years ago, forty dollars, but I think that's gone up.
Uh, Councilman, what's that?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for all you do, uh, Pastor.
Thank you.
Um, what percentage of Fountain Hills residents do you service?
Well, um, if there's twenty-two thousand people here and we serve right around a thousand, what would that be?
Look, okay, let me ask the question differently. Um, of those that you service, being, how many of those are Fountain Hills residents?
Um.
Cause I know for a time you had folks coming on-
Ninety, ninety-five, ninety-five percent.
My question. Has that increased, um, since you guys have been doing your work?
Five years ago, yes. Um, it's maintained that for the last five years.
And prior to that, it was?
It was a hundred families the first four years.
So that clearly indicates that the need has increased during the last five years, cause that's, that percentage is, is, is relatively high.
People have dropped off because they've moved. We're finding now that families are moving in together.
Uh-huh.
Um, will now get lists, grandpa, grandma, children living together. Um, so again, households, um, I don't know about households, but I do know that the numbers, um, are there.
So that's obviously, cause that's a question I'm asked a lot in terms of, um, the food bank in town, what, what, you know, and we, we kind of work with you and, and see for service contracts. What percentage, uh, of, of our residents are being served and it's in the high nineties?
Right.
And it's interesting that newspaper you held up, and I was looking at those sta- statistics earlier, and if anyone hasn't seen that, it's, it's shocking. Twenty-one percent of the population in the state of Arizona is considered having issues around food and not having enough food to, to do, to survive, basically. So your, your, your service is valuable. Thank you.
And one of the main reasons for that is unemployment in Arizona, as you know, pays a little over two hundred a week. That doesn't make a house payment or we also dispense funds for the ministerial and for the skeleton army. And, um, you know, people will come in with five, six hundred dollar utility bills, um, or especially during the summertime. And of course, they're gonna have their utilities cut off. We try to help them where we can, but people are facing that kind of straight. Thank you.
You know, okay. I, um, I, I think it's great that you have a booth up the fair.
Thank you.
And, uh, fortunately for you, it was really cold, so I think-
Cold, a lot of coffee and donuts.
You sold a lot of coffee and donuts.
Hot chocolate.
Uh-huh. So I think it was great that you, you stepped up and you've done more fundraising on your own so that you could become even more self-sufficient. I know your fish fry is very successful. Food is great.
Thank you.
Uh, and it's hard to find a spot on a Friday. Uh, and I also know that you take in clothes, but you just give it away. And so I'm sure you could make money on that if you wanted to, but I think it's great that you just take it in and, and let people take what they need.
Thank you.
Okay, so thank you. More questions? Thanks, Matt.
I don't have a question for this particular one, but I have a general, uh, comment just about all of the presentations. I wanted to refer back to the article that Henry mentioned, um, that was in the Arizona Republic in January, where the mayor stated that many residents have expressed outrage to me over this use of taxpayer money with little accountability for the past eight years excluding the chamber. I just wanted to hope that these presentations show that these many residents, that indeed every one of these providers have been operating with a high measure of accountability to the council and to the residents of Fountain Hills. Uh, I also wanted to note that we do not require the entire budget numbers for these contractors in order to evaluate, um, what they, what they do to fulfill their agreements and the responsibilities to the town. Um, and then as, uh, what I thought seems to be missing is, and I, I guess in a future meeting, maybe we will see a report, hear a similar report on the contract that we have with the, uh, posse.
Was that my quote? You said mayor. Was that my quote?
Yeah.
Wow, I'm getting so famous, I'm quotable now. All right, um, so if we're done, we can go on to call to the public. Do we have speaker cards? Yes, Mayor, we have two speakers. Judith Johnson. Followed by Eugene Swatka.
Uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's been, uh, long-
Do you think about participating to the, move the mic so we can hear you. Say your name and your town.
Uh, I'm Judith Johnson. I live in Fountain Hills.
Thank you.
Uh, I actually have been here before. I was here three years ago and spoke to a slightly different council and a different mayor and there was at that time a different town manager. Uh, my issue that I brought along with the petition from people living along Fountain Hills Boulevard and up onto Emerald Drive was around the issue of the speed limit in the wash. Uh, at the top of the wash or where the botanical garden is, the speed is posted at thirty-five miles per hour. At the bottom of the hill where, uh, Emerald Drive, um, dissects, if I'm going to Fountain Hills Boulevard, the speed becomes forty-five miles per hour. Uh, my last presentation was greeted with some, uh, research. The, uh, town became involved in looking at the situation. The city manager and someone from the engineering department took on the issue and, um, did a study. They set up tubes on the hill. Uh, their report included the fact that the average speed on the hill, and that was the median speed on the hill, so the most often speed on the hill was sixty-seven miles per hour. Again, it's posted at thirty-five and forty-five, depending on which end of the hill you're on. Uh, so sixty-seven miles per hour is, is well in excess of the, uh, posted speed limit. Uh, as I said, I've had some conversations with, uh, council members about, um, this issue over the last couple of years. Uh, it's basically between Kintre and Inca. And Inca is a four-way stop and there have been accidents there because people come down the hill, uh, gaining speed and, uh, arrive at that four-way stop going probably sixty-five to seventy-five miles per hour. Um, this issue, um, became, um, more critical, uh, during the recent hailstorm where people coming over that hill lost control of their vehicles. Uh, some of them came up onto our property and damaged our property. There were, uh, several mature agave and yucca plants run over and destroyed. Uh, fortunately, no one was killed. Uh, there was an accident report. Uh, this also happened in the dark because as you know, there are no street lights in Fountain Hills. So it is partic- uh, particularly hazardous, uh, in the winter when it's dark. Um, so what I'm asking again is that the speed limit be lowered on Fountain Hills Boulevard. It, uh, when you turn off of Shea Boulevard onto Fountain Hills Boulevard, there's a sign that says, "Slow down and enjoy our town." Clearly, that's not happening on Fountain Hills Boulevard. Also, there's been an increase in truck traffic, partially due to the, uh, insufficiency on Sawarow, uh, because of the bumpy road. So we're seeing an increase in traffic, an increase in speed and an increase in trucks. And I've listened to the presentations tonight and if you're looking for a return on investment, uh, that would be saving lives because eventually someone will be killed on that hill and it's just a matter of time. So again, I'm asking the council to look at the speed limit, consider lowering it to thirty-five miles per hour and, uh, make Fountain Hills a special town where people aren't pulling out on the gravel to pass other people while they're waiting to turn, uh, where people are raising, raising fists and fingers and all sorts of things. There's something that can be done that costs very little and that is, uh, having a town that's respectful of other drivers. And you can easily do that by lowering the speed limit. So it looks like I'm out of time, so if there's any questions for me, that's basically what I wanted to say and that's what I wanted to ask.
Okay, thanks very much. Uh, we can't ask any questions at this-
Yes.
Because of the, the way it's set up.
Yeah, last time it was handed over to the, uh, town manager.
I have taken notes.
Yes.
And the police captain standing in the back.
Uh, we, I did meet with the police last time. Yeah, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's, uh, hmm. Bye, June.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Eugene Swatka. I live in Fountain Hills. Uh, well, the chamber just had another very successful great fair in town. And the, uh, chamber estimates that I've seen were about two hundred and fifty thousand visitors. Of course, we're not alone now in hosting such events in the valley as a number of our fairs seems to grow year by year. I'm confident that the chambers events continue to be the premier in the valley. However, in comparing other events, I've noticed that many of the events charge an admission fee of typically three to eight dollars. Why does not the town consider this is a potential significant revenue generator? With the over four hundred thousand visitors the chamber says come to this two fairs, a five-dollar admission fee would bring two million dollars in revenue. Of course, the first thought is that attendance would drop. This would result in some reduced sales tax revenue. But what would be the reduction? I know that the admission revenue from the four hundred thousand attendees more than makes up for that. Even if we charged a dollar per person, that would bring in four hundred thousand dollars in revenue. And I contend that anyone that does not, that does come, doesn't come because of the one dollar admission really isn't a serious spender at the fair. It is true that there would be some funding necessary for fencing, ticket takers, printing tickets, et cetera. But that would tail in comparison to the potential revenue. Has it been done in, in this town? Sure, the fine art festival charges an admission and that's coming up this month. Scottsdale charges eight dollars. Carefree charges three dollars. You know, we could offer a deal for visitors such as if they take their admission tickets to any charity booth, such as Aquinas, BFW, American Legion, Extended Bank, and make a purchase, they could be credited a half or all of that admission price. It's a win-win. Or the admission ticket could be used as a raffle ticket. Or the revenue could be shared with the chamber. Then it's a win-win-win. Or part of that money could pay for all these wonderful programs we've heard about tonight. Just trying to think outside the box. I would suggest this council ask the town staff to investigate such an idea. We really owe it to the residents. We want to be resident family here. If this has been looked at in the past, I would say, so what? It's time to look at it again in light of the economic conditions. This could be a huge opportunity. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay. Now we'll go on to the consent agenda and we have eleven items that I have to read. So, the case of, I can't give you a brief version, sorry.
Mayor, rather than taking something off the consent agenda, I'll just recuse myself from the consent agenda.
All right, okay. All right, number one is consideration of approving the town council meeting minutes from February twelfth and the twenty-first, two thousand thirteen. Number two, consideration of approving a special event liquor license application submitted by Valerie and Stashik representing the Fountain Hills Theater Incorporated for the purpose of a fundraiser, March twenty-fourth, two thousand thirteen. Number three, consideration of approving a special event liquor license application submitted by Robert C. Smith representing the American Legion Post fifty-eight for the purpose of a fundraiser to be held March twenty-third, two thousand thirteen. Number four, consideration of approving a special event liquor license application submitted by Robert C. Smith representing the American Legion for the purpose of a fundraiser on March seventeenth, two thousand thirteen. Five, consideration of approving a wine festival licensed wine fair license application submitted by Duborca, Georgia Wall representing the Oak Creek Vineyards and Winery for participation in the Thunderbird Artist Annual Fountain Hills Fine Art and Wine Affair to be held March fifteenth, fifteen and seventeen, two thousand thirteen. Number six, consideration of approving a wine festival licensed wine fair license application submitted by Karen and Zemper representing Zemper Reserve LLC doing business as Studio Vino for participation in the Thunder Artist Annual Fountain Hills Fine Art and Wine Affair to be held March fifteenth, sixteen and seventeen, two thousand thirteen. Number seven, consideration of authorizing the town managers to enter into a professional service agreement as directed in the pavement management resolution two thousand thirteen dash oh-two with Texas Aspall for crash dealing in an amount not to exceed a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Number eight, consideration of authorizing the town managers to enter into a professional service agreement as directed in the pavement management resolution two thousand thirteen dash oh-two with Nesbit Contracting Company Incorporated for Aspall replacement and miscellaneous work in an amount not to exceed a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Number nine, consideration of authorizing the town managers to enter into a professional service agreement as directed in the pavement management resolution two thousand thirteen dash oh-two with Southwest Slurry Steel Incorporated for Slurry Steel in an amount not to exceed five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Number ten, consideration of authorizing the town managers to enter into a professional service agreement as directed in the pavement management resolution two thousand thirteen dash oh-two with pavement marking incorporated in an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Number eleven, consideration of resolution two thousand thirteen dash twelve, an intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa County for regional emergency operations management and disaster services. Okay, I have the motion to approve, please.
No movement, Mayor. Second.
And any speaker cards? Beth?
No, Mayor.
All right, Mayor, have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Yates?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee Sade?
Aye.
Council, uh, Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Elke?
Aye.
Mayor Sabinow?
Aye.
And Councilmember Giffey declared conflict for six years?
Thank you. We're going to our regular agenda items. The first is consideration with possible direction to staff regarding the town prosecutor position.
Vice Governor, members of the council. As you know, one of the operational priorities, establishing the town councils, evaluate, uh, town prosecutor position based on a lot of budget considerations that we've had for a number of our services. Um, and you know that there's been those ongoing discussions lately. Um, the current model of outsourcing those, those services is a proven and successful model. What we're looking for as staff is requesting direction as to whether to stay the course or, uh, consider an alternative.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion at this time. I'd, I'd move to provide the town prosecutor two weeks to propose a prosecution services agreement for fiscal year two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen for council's consideration, which outlines the scope of work, accountability measures and an itemized billing format that the council can consider.
Second.
All right, behalf of most of the citizens, uh, do you have any speaker cards on this?
Yes, Mayor, we have two.
Okay.
Chet Yon, followed by Ellen Spreden.
Uh, good evening, uh, Linda and councilmembers. My name is, uh, Chet Yon. I'm an attorney here practicing in Fountain Hills. I've lived here since nineteen eighty-seven and I've practiced here since nineteen eighty-nine. Uh, I was a former prosecutor in Minnesota for twenty-plus years. Uh, and I know what that job entails and some of the, uh, joys and pitfalls that it can, uh, uh, contain. Uh, I have, during my practice here in Fountain Hills since nineteen eighty-nine, I have, I appeared in the court, uh, uh, numerous times and- I have appeared in the court, uh, uh, numerous times and have, uh, uh, been, uh, against or if you want to say opposite of the prosecutor because of course it was defense work. I've always found, uh, the, uh, prosecution team, whichever one it was, uh, be it, uh, Mark or, uh, any of the others that he works with, to be extremely professional, uh, to be very fair and very honest and very upright. I have absolutely never had a case where I felt there was a problem. Uh, didn't win them all, but that's the name of the game. Uh, and of course, that's the way it goes. But, uh, they always, uh, respond when I ask for a material, we request, uh, documents from them, they promptly respond, there's never a question of it. And, uh, I think that, uh, my, the adage is if it ain't broke, don't fix it, uh, pertains here. Uh, I've, uh, found Mark and his, uh, staff to be extremely professional and, uh, I, uh, look forward to continuing, uh, practicing, uh, with them.
Okay, thank you, Seth.
Thank you.
Mayor Kavanaugh, uh, good evening, council, my name's Alan Spraggan, I'm an attorney here in Fountain Hills and a resident. I got tested a little bit since nineteen eighty-five, although I did take a break between nineteen eighty-nine and two thousand five. Uh, but I returned to Fountain Hills in two thousand five, I've, uh, operated my solo law office here since then on Avenue of the Fountains. Um, I, uh, I want to say that I've practiced throughout Maricopa County since nineteen ninety-five. I think I've practiced in all, just a couple of the municipal courts, uh, as well as all the justice courts here in Maricopa County. Uh, and I've also handled cases, I think, in every county in Arizona with the exception of maybe a couple of them. Um, the reason I say that is one, to impress you with how much I drive, and two, to, um, impress upon you that I've dealt with a lot of prosecutors in my seventeen years. And I want to say that the, uh, the prosecution that serves the town of Fountain Hills that I've become acquainted with over the last, uh, several years has been, um, very professional, uh, easy to work with and, uh, you know, I use easy, that's a relative term, so compared to a lot of prosecutorial agencies that I deal with, some very bureaucratic ones. Um, I, I can get more done in, uh, a phone conversation with Mr. Jacovino or, uh, or his assistant, uh, in half an hour than I get done in months sometimes dealing with, uh, other prosecutors' offices. Uh, so, I, uh, I'm just here tonight and, uh, this is the first time I've ever appeared in front of this council, but I'm here tonight, I'm not a political guy, but I just want to say that I think that, um, um, Mr. Jacovino is doing a fine job here in Fountain Hills and, um, and I would urge the council to, uh, stay the course, um, not to make any major changes, I realize that the budget's an ongoing concern. I think you're getting a very good return on your investment, uh, currently. And then, in closing, I just want to say I do provide a discount to Fountain Hills residents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? I think we, we've all received quite a few letters also in support of our prosecutor, which is, um, should be all in the packet. Uh, so I, any other council discussion, we have a motion and a second, does anyone have anything else they want to add?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hanson?
I just wanted to say I'm looking forward to seeing Mark's proposal so that I have the opportunity to vote my vote of confidence in keeping him in town.
Okay, and did you have something else you wanted to ask, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, with respect to the discussion, and it's no secret for those that are following, that follow Fountain Hill politics or work studies or discussions, that this is something that I've brought to the council's attention over the past two years. And I will speak and echo what both Mr. Yon and Mr. Spraggans have said, that I have handled cases before being on the council with Mr. Jacovino and he has done, he's been nothing but a true gentleman and probably one of the best or easiest prosecutors to work with from a defense standpoint in Maricopa County. As I've brought this issue up a number of times over the, or I shouldn't say a number of times, twice over the past two years, this has not been about Mr. Jacovino in any sense of the word whatsoever, regardless of what may be said. I've spoken with Mr. Jacovino directly, I believe we have an understanding, uh, with each other. And for me, in my experience, similar to these gentlemen, although I haven't been in Fountain Hills that long and I haven't practiced that long, but, uh, I, I certainly hope to be able to do that and I do offer a discount, I'm just kidding. Full price for everybody. Um, but, um, with the current, the issue for me has been based on my knowledge of the market that's out there and what is available, that there would be a potential savings to be realized if this was put out far as Q. I have no doubt in my mind, and I, I, I would hope that Mr. Jacovino would concur with this, but I have no doubt in my mind if this was put out, that there would be a number of bids and probably some that would lowball it. I certainly would want Mr. Jacovino to stay here in town and this is why, um, the sole reason that I brought this up was purely financial as well as types of services. In the past, Mr. Jacovino, um, as I, uh, learned, was paid additional monies in the past for to provide additional services such as education to our sheriffs or marshals in the past, uh, education and availability, uh, with respect to staff. And, um, I would like to see some of those additional services returned. And for us, actually have a contract with our town prosecutor. We've got a town prosecutor for twenty-two years and we've had letters of, of proposals that have been, point or another, accepted by town staff. I'd like to have a contract of measurables, we talk about accountability, we talk about, uh, um, knowing what the return on the investment is, and I think it'll serve not only the town, the council, but also Mr. Jacovino in the future as well. And I think that all contracts, as we've closely scrutinized just about every budget item over the past two, two and a half years, all contracts need to be scrutinized to make sure that we are getting the most bang for the buck. Return on investment is obviously the word that gets used quite a bit. And, uh, and I look forward to seeing what Mr. Jacovino's proposal is, thank you.
Councilman, yes?
I don't know if this is a question or just open for discussion, although I appreciate, and I know, uh, Mr. Jacovino would probably provide this for us, but in a lot of these work sessions, certain ideas were thrown out to give to Mr. Jacovino. Do we have an entity that is going to share with him some of the views that we've had in some of these work sessions? I don't know if I should direct this to Ken, although I appreciate what Mark can do, but it, it seems we're relying on him to come up with the scope of work when we may have some of the ideas that we would like to share with him prior to that.
I think we'll be working together on that scope.
Okay, that's all I need, thank you, Mayor.
Anything else? All right, we have a motion and a second, we call for the vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Here's seven zero, all right. Okay, number thirteen, public hearing receives comments on a proposed special use permit to allow AT&amp;T Wireless Communications to raise the existing church tower height from thirty-six feet to fifty-one feet in order to install communications antennas within the town structure, the property is zone R four, ten?
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, Mr. Rogers has explained in further detail should the council want that for the, uh, request from AT&amp;T to, um, extend the height of the, um, stealth, um, antenna.
Go ahead, Bob.
Thank you, Mayor. This is application by Clear Blue Services on behalf of AT&amp;T for a new cellular antenna array to be installed within the Presbyterian Church's rear bell tower. Church property, as you mentioned, is located at one three zero zero one North Fountain Hill Boulevard and is zone R four. The serial site plan marks the location of the existing bell tower, which is the proposed location of the new antenna array from the rear of the church on the side and rear. The top plan shows that the site has good access off Fountain Hill Boulevard, will not interfere with any traffic, pedestrian or otherwise. And the bottom plan is a blow up and it shows the ground mounted equipment. It's inside an eight foot tall block wall and the bell tower with the antenna arrays inside is directly adjacent to it. The existing bell tower is thirty-six feet tall. The proposal will increase the bell tower's height by fifteen feet to fifty-one feet and also haul the antenna arrays inside. The antennas will not be visible from the exterior. The ground equipment will be at the base of the tower enclosed by the eight foot wall and the new structures will be constructed to match the existing building design. The photo sims, the one on the left shows the existing tower in white towards the back and the one on the right shows the tower being proposed, which is fifteen feet taller. They're shown in white, they won't be white, they'll be done to match the actual church, but they're showing here so you can actually see them in the, in the photo sims. Criteria for approval of a special use permit has been outlined in your staff report along with staff review recommendations. Staff believe the criteria have been met and recommend that the council approve the proposed cell tower as outlined. Any applicants are also present if you have any questions, I can close my presentation.
Yeah, I just have a question, um, I noticed that it's starting in P and G and were there any complaints that we received during the P and G meeting on this?
No.
Okay, um, I only received one and it seems to be a question about lighting. Uh, this resident is concerned that the, the tower's going to be lit and it's going to interfere with the dark skies. Um, could you address that, are there going to be any kind of lights on the tower?
Uh, no, there's currently no light on the tower and there are none proposed to be on the tower. The only lights would be in the, uh, up over to the plant, in the ground mounted area if there was a tech on duty at night and they needed a little light. There are no lights on the tower, the tower that gets lit is the one with the cross, not the other one, not the one in the back.
Okay, all right, um, and that's all I have, any other questions from the council? Uh, Vice Mayor Elke?
Could we have the applicant, uh, who are the representative applicants, please?
Good evening, my name is Dana Bettina with Clear Blue Services. Um, this is, uh, Bob Zimmerman, he also is with Clear Blue Services representing AT&amp;T.
Thank you, thank you for telling me how, uh, to answer some questions. Um, can you, can you tell me that we're going from thirty-six to fifty, fifty-one? Um, can you explain to me what's the purpose? I think there's an obvious purpose for that, but can you explain to me what the purpose would be and what, what the return is going to be on that? Um, I guess the need, I guess that's what I'm asking.
For the technological need?
Yes, please.
Um, basically there is a zapping coverage in this particular area. We are required to fill that zapping coverage. In order to do that, we need to be, um, within the search ring, that's an area that we've identified as an area having, uh, of that. Um, this is one of the sites that provide an opportunity for us to be able to fill that gap.
Are there any other sites that would potentially fill that gap?
Uh, Bob did the search, so I'll let him speak.
We looked at about, uh, five different sites as we were going around the area. And to kind of expand on your question, why are we going up fifteen feet? By utilizing this location in particular and raising the height by fifteen feet, we eliminate the need to add an additional site, uh, just due to the topography in Fountain Hills. With the hilly area, you get up higher, now I can shoot down into the valley. So other areas were looked at, some of them were lower, uh, and would require more than one site.
Will there be any future need that you would foresee to have to increase beyond what you're requesting to have done here tonight?
Uh, at this particular site, no. I would say that there probably will be additional locations that will be required as the needs of the community expand.
Thank you.
Yeah, and our package, it, it, package it does have, um, it does have slides that you provided, pictures of, of the aerial view and it shows your coverage, so that's, um, it's, it's informative, that's what we need, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, then, thank you very much. Um, any speaker cards? Oh, wait, uh, do you want? Well, I, I need the speaker card first, we're still on the public hearings. No speaker card, okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing, officially close. Consideration of special use permit to allow AT&amp;T Wireless Communications to raise existing church tower height from thirty-six feet to fifty-one feet in order to install communications antennas within the tower structure, the property is zone R four. Any further council discussion or would you initiate a motion?
Thank you, Mayor, move to approve the proposed special use permit to allow fifty-one foot tall church bell tower with internal antenna arrays and associated ground mounted, ground mounted equipment at one three zero zero one North Fountain Hill Boulevard, subject to the stipulations contained in the staff report.
Mayor, second.
All right, any other discussion? Uh, all in favor? Any opposed? You're seven zero, okay, thank you for coming. Uh, consideration with possible direction to staff to initiate a zoning ordinance amendment permitting a movie theater as a permitted use within the C one zoning district. Um, we're going, uh, Councilmember Yates on that one, cheer up.
Uh, several years ago, um, I was a co-chair of the general plan amendment and a movie theater was listed specifically as something that we might want to do. Uh, it's a retail operation and it seems to make sense to include that as an additional use in the C one. Specifically, there's maybe around five sites, um, Bob might update me on that. Uh, two on Shea and there's three internal that this, uh, possibly could be used on. Uh, there's no specific project, there's no specific developer. Um, it's just after having spoken with some other landowners in town that have C one and asking about some of the needs, um, or some of the uses, it was found that that was one that was omitted and it seemed to make sense to include that as an additional use. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, um, council discussion on this or a motion?
Mayor, if I may, um, Bob, um, could you pull up the map and just, uh, just very quickly, um, for the benefit of the, the, the public, um, identify the, um, C one areas that we are, um, addressing this evening?
I, I don't know if I can find it, I don't think it's on the Z drive, is it?
I'm going to see if it'll take a minute to get it.
Say, while you're doing that, I have another question for you, if I may, Mayor. Um, what, do you know, I don't have our ordinance book in front of me here, what are the permitted uses in C one currently and why was theater excluded from that?
C one is general neighborhood commercial, uh, generally light, uh, retail office, uh, as general uses. Those are the, the uses, um, neighborhood related commercial.
So the reason why it was never included in there is the proximity to residential, is that what you're saying?
Probably, yeah, I mean, I wasn't here at the time, uh, if you look at any of our commercial districts, they're all close to residential because they're all kind of intermixed.
Absolutely, yeah, okay. It looks like there's an, um, what? Once you get that up, it, it's just been very difficult for me to decipher, uh, street names on, on the, uh, map that was provided in our packet. It's kind of changing orange areas, so if you just could quickly, um, take us through, um, those areas, just simply saying where those orange areas are located.
I guess we'll start at the north and work our way down, this is Fountain Hill Boulevard as it goes into the Elmen property. You have the C one up here at the end, uh, the, the existing plaza there is C one and, uh, the, uh, with the charter school there is also.
Is that that small strip in the Elmen development, um, on the right-hand side as you're going out that way?
Just before you get to it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, and the others are down Saguaro Boulevard, you have one somewhere around the, uh, the dog park area, uh, where the skate park is, uh, the Kwanis building is also C one.
Okay.
Um, and you have C one down at the corner of Saguaro Boulevard and Shea. And that is the area where McDonald's, Circle K, the vacant lot behind McDonald's and then going over on to the, onto Monterey and down, uh, Monterey is, it comes in here.
Is that, is that the vacant property across from, um, Senior Taco? Where there's, there's a chain link fence that runs up that.
Yeah, behind them, yes.
Yeah, that's the part that you're talking about, okay, thank you.
And also down Shea a little bit as well.
Whereabouts on Shea, that's what I'd like to know.
Well, it's, it's that entire intersection on the north side of Shea is C one.
Okay.
And then down to Monterey, uh, down where Shea's Bank is and the vacant lot across from that.
Oh, moving the other direction, okay, very good, thank you.
And then you've also got the Frye Plaza, which is C one here.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that thought, thanks for that.
Any other questions for Bob? Councilmember Dixie? Thank you, Mayor. Do you, is this something that would have to go to P and G?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Okay, um, just real quick, go ahead. On the looks, at looking at these areas, there really don't seem to be any that would be able to handle the size, I mean, a theater. They all seem fairly small. I mean, maybe Frye's the only one, and that, that would be only if.
That was an example. I guess I could give you an example, the vacant lot behind McDonald's is about five acres. The vacant lot that's, uh, down by, just a little bit down Shea by Chase Bank opposite, uh, across the street on Monterey there, that's another five acres. The, the vacant lot right there at the beginning of the Elmwood property, that's about eleven or twelve acres. I don't know how big that has to be for a theater.
But if we think about a, a fairly big box, and certainly on Monterey, I mean, that's right next to residential, and, I mean, I guess I was just curious, like, where in these C one areas, where would it really be a comfortable fit?
Mayor, ma'am.
Well, I guess if someone came in with a proposal, obviously they would have to fit their theater to the area, um, but councilman Yip, do you wanna?
Along the same line.
Move it a little bit more.
Sure, along the same line, um, you obviously couldn't put a fourteen or sixteen screen movie theater on a five-acre site. What this would do would then give another option for a developer, if they so choose to put a smaller theater, more like a six to eight screen, that would fit the site. Um, another thing to bring, to bring up, uh, fast food, uh, full-service restaurants, there's several other retail components that are allowed on a C one that, if we use the, the residential, um, discussion as to what kind of operation we want, are far more, um, traffic, um, fast or traffic-friendly than, you know, movie theater in and out every, every two hours or so. And again, there's no project on the table, but through discussions, uh, with some of the developers, and, uh, we've spoken with some of the landowners, they indicated that, uh, you know, this might be something to consider.
So I guess you're not, you're not exactly, you're not saying, you know, we should have movie theater in all of these spots?
No.
It's obviously zoning which is small, but what you're saying is that we change the zoning, and then if, if something, if a small movie theater does come in, they have the option to find perhaps a suitable lot to their needs.
That's exactly correct.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mayor, if I may, um.
Councilman Mike Ray?
We, are we, we're not changing the zoning, are we? Aren't we just changing the permitted uses? Okay, I just want, I just wanna clarify that, 'cause that, that was a question I had when I looked through the packet. Um, the other, other thing is that, uh, in that this has to go to P and G, what, what, what is the town manager look, looking for, um, what are we looking for this evening?
Direction to, um, proceed with taking this to the P and G for consideration and recommendation back.
Okay, I, all right, that's just what, exactly, I wanted to make sure it went to P and G, we had a public hearing before thinking back to, just wanted to clarify what you're looking for, thank you.
Really sticker cards on this item?
No, ma'am.
Okay, is there any discussion, or can I get a motion, please?
Mayor? I move that we, um, ask P and G to look at this, uh, as adding movie theaters as a permitted use on, under C one zoning.
And second?
Second.
Uh, any other discussion? Um, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Fifteen.
You have it in?
Sixteen.
Okay. Discussion was possible, direction to staff relating to any item including the League of Arizona City and Towns Weekly Legislative Board in or related to any action proposed or pending before the state legislates. Ten?
Mayor Cavell, members of the council, if you have any discussions, I know that the one that's on the forefront is the transaction privilege tax, and I know that the mayor's been working with the other East Valley mayors, um, regarding that, and I believe there's a meeting tomorrow, um, with the powers that be, um, on furthering that along and defending our position.
Yeah, there's a meeting tomorrow with the Capitol to work out, it's not only the TPT, but also the auditing part, and again, I wanna thank Julie for all the help that she gave me in that. I'm going in as like an expert now, and I know every unintended consequence that could ever happen to Fountain Hills because of this. So I think I've got a lot of ammunition, and so do the other mayors, and I think the important thing is that we're putting up the united front, because even the bigger cities like, uh, Scottsdale are standing with us, and, uh, this is very important. This shows a good partnership, um, not just the small cities in town that are protesting this, but we have a really good support. So I think, uh, I think we're gonna get some, some valuable concessions, uh, that, uh, that'll turn this whole thing around, and hopefully tomorrow. And I, I have to thank, I have to thank, uh, Sarah Spencer from Cavell, because this did pass out of ways and means a zero, and it went into appropriations, and that's where he stopped it and said, we've gotta bring the cities and towns in and the mayors, and let's have a discussion on this, because they've got lots of questions that are not being answered, and that's the reason we had the meeting last Friday, and that's the reason we're having the meeting, uh, tomorrow morning, otherwise we would have not been granted this kind of audience with the legislators and the senators and, um, those higher-ups in the governance office. Anybody else wanna comment on this or any other?
Other, yeah.
Sure, go ahead.
David, are, are you, um, up on all this kind of stuff? Have you been following the legislative? I have a couple of, of questions about three different bills.
Uh, no, I'm not, actually. I've been following some, but only in a certain area.
Well, the bill fourteen seventy to strike everything to allow the public safety district, um, prop, dedicated property tax, I wondered if you were, um, it did pass pretty strongly out of the Senate, and, um, I just wanted to, I just get it out there that we would be aware of there any amendments or anything that could be put on there. We talk about unintended consequences all the time, um, sometimes when, uh, we pursued this in the past to talk about possible public safety districts, we were, um, led to believe that we had to have a give somehow, so if getting a public safety district is gonna mean less shared revenue, or they're gonna tell you what kind of police you hire, what kind of fire you hire, and things like that, it, you know, it looks great right now, and I think Paradise Valley is the town that brought this forward, but, um, it's just something to be aware of, because there are things that usually come with those kinds of bills.
And I would say, mayor, council, that, uh, in several communities around the state, there are dedicated public safety taxes, but they're generally a sales tax, the transaction privilege tax increment that the voters have passed, and so that doesn't count against your annual budget tax levy and expenditure limits and things of that nature, so how those things have gone into this, I'm not sure has been thoroughly looked at. I haven't followed the bill that closely, but I'm aware of those issues. It being a dedicated property tax makes it a different animal than what we have traditionally seen over the last twenty years or so.
Yes, and mayor, and I noticed that, uh, league is neutral, so they're not, um, all over it yet. Um, the other one is House Bill twenty-five fifty-four, which is firearm regulation, state preempton, it was held in rules today, and league opposes. I wondered if you or ten knew the ramifications of this bill to the town and to our school district, enforcing us one way or the other to deal with firearms in public buildings?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm, I'm familiar with it, I've been watching that to find out what's been going on with, with this bill. I didn't know it was held today.
I can, I can give you a little background on this one, I did look into it, uh, because we were informed, uh, that we, we have a no, a no guns, uh, placard on our front windows, but yet by law we're supposed to have lockers, uh, so that's already in place, that if you, if you don't permit guns in public buildings, you, you have to have lockers for someone to check, uh, their weapon, uh, that, so that's not, that's already law. This, this doesn't do that. What this does is, I know there's one provision in there that says that if you have two buildings that are within two hundred feet of each other, you don't have to have two storage facilities, you can have one. And there's another part of it that says, um, that you have to have the, uh, storage facility, uh, close to an entrance, and, and posted on the window where you go, uh, to avoid people coming into a building with their weapon and wandering around, not knowing where they're supposed to check it. Uh, so that's a provision, and I believe there's also an increased penalty that if you do have, uh, security that, um, is at the door, and someone purposely avoids the security in order to, uh, bring their gun in, when you have it posted that they have to come in and check it, then, uh, that's, I believe that that fine is increased to a class one, maybe, I'm looking at, have to mess that, he might know. I think it's, it's increased to a, a class one misdemeanor, uh, so that, that's increased if you try to avoid checking your gun and you just bring it in. So, um, those are the three things that I know, uh, are changes, and I guess not having to have, you know, two locker sections for certain buildings that are close together, that's good, and making sure that people know where they go to store it, that's good too, and increasing the penalty for people who try to avoid checking it. Those are, those are the three that I know. But, but the law already says that if you have this sticker on your window, you have to, you have to, um, have a locker, which we don't have at this time.
Oh, and one of the parts that I'm seeing that I don't know exactly what it means has to do with public events, so I would hope that the league, since they are opposed, they probably are opposed to it for something to do with that, but if a public event is, um, sponsored, it's, it's defined as being sponsored by, by, by a governmental entity, but it doesn't have to be in that building, so I don't know what the ramifications of that would be for parades and things like that, whether then guns have to be allowed there, and what are the, what, what is the ramifications of that to us as far as providing security and things like that. And last one, mayor, is the, um, Senate Bill fourteen oh three, um, ten, it's, uh, called the United Nations Rio Declaration of Prohibition, the league opposes it, it was held on the floor today, retained in Cal today, and I guess my question to one, one of you would be if you see this bill as having any, uh, possible chance of passing, because it does definitely ha- uh, prohibit cities from doing certain things.
I'm not familiar with it. I have a pa- presentation, I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, this is a, I don't think it's gonna go anywhere, but if it does, it has ramifications on things that we're, we are not allowed to do here or the school district.
Okay, and in, in reference to, um, what you said about events, I know that, uh, the Chamber Day was at the legislature, and I know that the Chamber had some input in that also. Um, as you know, so many things are written, and then other people step up and say the unintended consequences here, so we have to look at that. So I'm very sure that Frank Barrera probably brought that to their attention, um, on Tuesday. Okay, uh, if there are no further bills to discuss, and ten, did you have anything else that you wanna add? Aye, then, uh, let's obtain a motion to adjourn.
Move second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we're gonna have a short break, and then the council's gonna be going into a speculative session upstairs, but I do need a short break.